I'd like to call this meeting in Timerville Town Council, ordered May ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Please join me in a way.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, folks, just trying to get this agenda straightened out. Everybody has three different minutes. You have April eleventh for standard council meetings. You have April twenty-third for the first budget meeting. You have April twenty-ninth for the second budget meeting. Any questions or amendments, changes, anything like that to the minutes? If not, I will need a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the minute.
Thank you, Isaac. Do you have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Debbie. Around the room?
Yes.
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 Okay. Treasurer's report. Everybody has a copy of the treasurer's report. Any questions about the account balances that we have? Too long, too quickly. Treasurer's report. Excuse me. Bills for payment. Everybody has a copy of the bills. You'll notice that the new, or the replacement pump that we talked about is on a year of seven thousand some odd dollars. Macy's, if anyone's interested, that's coming out of the twenty thousand dollar.
Sewer question system capital. That's kind of why we have that in there, so items like that could come up.
And then you'll notice the waste management is higher because of the special trash pickup. Apparently, a lot of trash gets thrown away during that, during that event. Any questions on the bills? Need a motion to approve, please?
Make motion, pay the bills.
Awesome. Second.
Second.
Okay, go around the room?
Yes.
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 Okay. Chief, what do you got for us today?
We're, we're, we had one meeting today, didn't we?
Yeah, we've had seven.
Town ordinances, I guess, is a big thing. It's that time of year, so grass is growing, it doesn't stop raining. So the officers have the town divided into four sections. Officers sign the east section, so they're going to keep an eye out for junk cars, meaning anything that doesn't have up-to-date registration and/or inspection. Anything that's disassembled, cap light tires, anything like that is inoperable via ordinance, that, grass, and accumulated trash. So they do it all year long, but there's always a big push in the spring because things start growing. Houses that may get back taken over during the winter, it's not getting there, that kind of thing. So we have just under thirty of them that address so far. I don't know how many are backing compliance, but that's a big thing on top of our normal traffic and criminal interdiction, so.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief? You guys sure list?
Yes, I did. Let me, just want to do something real quick and see. We need to have a public hearing here. We're having a public hearing tonight.
On sidewalk.
What did you say, was it Tom?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, okay. I'll go through the rest of the list first, then.
Well, you can always be late, you just can't do it early.
So let's go to, let's start with the lot line revision at two ninety-seven Montevideo Street. And two ninety-seven is wanting to purchase a small piece of the property from two eighty-one High Street. It basically would square off their property. The plan commission reviewed it at their last meeting and recommends approval of that lot line revision. Anybody have any questions on that? Does the drawing make sense?
The lot line is what they want to apply on.
Yep.
I make a motion that we approve a lot line revision.
Okay, we have a motion and second, and further discussion. Okay, Isaac?
Yes.
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 Okay, what else you got?
Our engineer has been coordinating with the contractor on the Sparline, Sparbound Waterline project and about planning, when they're planning to mobilize. They're going to start on, they're planning to start on the west end of the project site and work their way back into town as we work through the steps to obtain the easement for the one property. So that's what, that's just an update on that project. And the other thing that I have on my list is we, we're addressing different unlicensed businesses throughout town. The Old Mason's Lot, one on Center Street, one on Shandong Avenue. So trying to get some of that stuff cleaned up that's outstanding. I know one of them, one of them will come up before plan and commission next week probably is a request for a home occupation. So plan and commission will be able to hear that and determine, you know, the action about plan and commission to make that determination. And then the Old Mason's Lot, one of the things is looking at pure release of truck traffic, or the tractor trailers that are parked in there. And I was in contact with the property owner, and he said that they're not even supposed to be parking up there. So I'm going to talk to Quentin after the meeting. JR and I discussed it earlier today about how the town can be involved in that, and, you know, they're, they're not local, the owners aren't local, so they don't see what's going on in that property all the time. So they will get that addressed pretty quick then. And the only other thing I have on the list is for the sidewalk project donation of bright white.
We're still on that.
Wait a few minutes on that, then.
How about business and industry risk movement will come back?
Oh, let's see. The only thing on that is still that Mr. Garcia's, the likes that we've heard, is that it's supposed to open at the end of this month.
Okay. Parks and Rec?
We're going to be Tuesday. Yep.
Yeah, I'm trying to slow up. Parks and Rec?
If you haven't had a chance, go down and look at the shelter because the shelter looks fabulous since the guys repaired it from the tree damage where the large tree fell on it. And it looks completely different. Melinda went down and took a picture yesterday, and it was posted on Facebook, and it looks really, it looks really sharp. Kind of wish that would have happened a long time ago.
Yeah, I was standing there today, and I had a people made comments and some compliments on how well it looks.
Well, nice.
So you wish a tree would have fallen a long time ago? No, it does look great. It's, it's an area that wasn't being used, but now I think will be one of the most used spots.
Very likely, yeah, very likely.
Okay. And how's the bathroom going along in the park?
Continue to.
The walls are up.
Continue to proceed with that, so.
It's good.
Get that painting here up. I know the city is working on some different events for this summer. Another thing that I need to go over with Quentin is contracts for performing arts, different bands that will come in. So try to develop a standard town contract so we don't have to review a bunch of different, different ones. So I think she, Melinda, you remember she had three of them that she's working on for concerts this summer in the park, so.
Three acts with one contract?
It's, it's, it would be three different events.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. And then finance, we had, we had our public hearing, what days it could be?
For, I guess it's next, next Thursday, a week from today on the sixteenth.
What time?
At six o'clock PM.
Make sure I have it on here. I'm sure I did. Sixteenth at six o'clock. Okay. Cool. Personnel, I know we have to go into another closed session of our personnel matters this afternoon, so apologize for that, folks. We go twenty years without, without having one or two, we have three months in a row. So we'll do that, we'll figure out when we do that. And you might as well do your Plains museums, and so we've got to waste two more minutes for a public hearing on the.
Okay. May nineteenth is early funeral homes and practices in the Plains district. Grandos is giving this presentation. Our new exhibit transportation is going up in early June, and heritage dates is September twenty-first. We had sixty-five visitors last month and ninety-six plus volunteer hours. That's it.
Did I make it to the end?
Nope.
Okay. Does council have any other business? We'll jump down to that real quick. We have two more minutes before we can have a public hearing. This is, this is. Hey, Bev, you want to give, you want to give yours? You're talking to my ass, you want to give yours now?
It might take you long.
Oh, we can, we can do it late, we just can't do it early.
Oh.
So come on. Yeah, I can do it after seven fifteen, I just can't do it before seven fifteen.
As everybody knows, Timerville had the distillery. Lawson Queen was its name. It was brandy. Its label was unique. It had the only liquor label in the world with the picture of a girl on it. The day after they got the license for the label, a law was passed saying that women, girls, and United States flags could not be put on the label.
Okay.
Nineteen fifty-four, the future gold story is taken home by Rockin' Hand Poultry for seven hundred fifty-three thousand dollars. Here in Timerville, Abba Gordon was the first woman elected to a town council in Rockin' County. And was one of the first in the state. You know her a little bit. Edgar Gordon, known as Epps, started his barber shop in nineteen thirteen in an old Miller Jones store there on Main Street, which later became Kipps' Store. The only place I remember that King cut the hair was in an old post office building for years and years. He barbers for forty-five years, retiring February first, nineteen fifty-eight. He saw the price go from fifteen cents to seventy-five cents. He was the first one in that area to get electric flippers in nineteen eighteen or nineteen nineteen. Hadn't had electricity much before that day. Timerville's first telephone service was connected in eighteen eighty-eight. A cap was made from the Shirley Rozenberger line being built from Newmarket to Harrisonburg. A different article stated that Dr. Vaughn got a telephone soon after he started his medical practice here in Timerville, which is eighteen eighty-four. So maybe he was in practice for several years before he got a phone, but, and the first phone in Timerville probably went to Dr. Vaughn's office, is what we think.
And what year do you think, what year was that?
Well, he started his practice eighteen eighty-four, so then if the telephone cap was eighteen eighty-eight, that was pretty early on, you know. Will Wright, now that's the Wright Marble Works down at the end of the bridge where Godfather's Peace is. And he cuts some stone for the courthouse in Harrisonburg, which was built in eighteen ninety-six. He also cuts stone for other buildings in Harrisonburg. So the courthouse came from Timerville. Well, I got more than that, I like. That little lager bought the Vaughn house in eighteen thirty-three. And that little lager was the grandfather of Dr. Vaughn. And that's the building right straight across Main Street from the museum.
Okay.
That's known as the Vaughn House.
Okay.
Now, Ted Orwell wrote to Mr. Clarity that three days after he landed in France during the World War Two invasion, his rations included tomatoes that were canned at the Ziegler Tannery. I've heard stories like that before. Tannery received a letter from Rockin' County boys in Iceland, England, and North Africa that told them of eating peaches canned by the Ziegler Tannery. The Tannery processed three thousand bushels of peaches a day. They canned a hundred and fifty thousand cases of peaches for military and civilian use in nineteen forty-four. That's a pretty big operation. July third, nineteen seventy-three, a truck filled with gravel crashed into Mason Motor Sales, most of them remember that. Nelson Gore became town treasurer in February nineteen fifty-five. The budget that year was fifteen thousand dollars. Nelson was paying seventy-five dollars for the year.
Came by sewer pump for that, doesn't it?
After almost twenty years, he retired from that job in June nineteen seventy-four. During that time, the town got into the sewer business in nineteen sixty-six and into the, and the bulk of water company either nineteen fifty-five or nineteen fifty-eight. I don't know the date on that. Now, the distillery, most people use the date it started in nineteen thirty-four, but it really started in nineteen twenty-eight. It ran into financial difficulty in nineteen thirty-three, and investment bankers stepped in and bought it in nineteen thirty-four, I think it was in New York. In the late nineteen forties, had more financial trouble, and it was sold in nineteen forty-nine. They began dismantling the valuable copper pipes and the tubing. The peak operation produced six thousand four hundred proof gallons a day. And the owners said, in this business, the internal revenue service is on, sits on their coattails. I've always heard the old people always said, the, the feds were around here all over the place when that thing was operating. And they really kept tracking things like that, I believe. Now, I got one more here. Nineteen fifty-six, there were sixty-five thousand bushels of apples in the field above the Tannery, with thousands of bushels added daily. At the peak of the apple season, the Tannery was turning out eleven thousand cases of apple sauce per day, plus spiced apples and apple juice. Then last month, we talked about the prisoner of war camp, and I did a little dig on that, and, and it was one prisoner that escaped. He was, he was working over at the Ziegler Tannery, and he just disappeared. And I always heard that he was caught all around American Legion and farm. So he either gave up or they captured him, I think twelve hours later, and he realized he didn't have a way to get back to Germany. His name was Kirk McHaw. And when, when the farmers and all the businesses would check out a group of prisoners to work for him each day, they had to pay three dollars and fifty cents per person. And the, and the prisoners got to pay eighty cents for that. So that's it.
Thank you, Bev.
Thank you, Bev.
Okay. Now, I'm going to open this up for public comment, or public hearing, excuse me. We have to have a public hearing. We're putting sidewalks in from the corner here down to the community center. And in doing so, we need to, I guess it's termed donate?
Yeah.
Donate the land that the sidewalk sits here outside of town to VDOT. And that's what, that's what this is about today because we're, I guess, disposing of land.
Disposing of public land.
Disposing of public land, we have to have a public hearing in case someone has an issue with disposing of this public land for a sidewalk. Correct? So I'll open up the public comment on this donation of sidewalk.
And we're looking, we're looking at about seven hundred and twenty-one square feet, so huge amount of land that we're missing. It's basically enough out here along the side of the building for VDOT instead of having to, they originally were going to have to do some really odd configuration with the sidewalk, put some zigzags in it and everything else, and we said, let's just come right straight up through here if you can do that. And they were like, well, that makes it a whole lot easier. And I think actually knocks some of the cost off of it.
Not a lot of money off of it.
Yeah. So that's, that's why we're looking at doing this donation.
Okay. So hold up the public hearing on the land donation for a sidewalk. If anyone wants to make a comment on that land or a sidewalk, please come up. I imagine a lot of people want to make a comment on that, but. Anybody? And you guys want to make a comment on the sidewalk donation? Okay. Then we will close it. Okay. They will continue on. Oh, we got to be at the vote on, too, that way?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. How, how should it be phrased?
We need a motion to approve signing the deed of gift and donation that was included in the package with the attached survey. Who normally signs the deeds? Don, mayor, or you?
Don would.
Yeah. So the motion would be to approve the mayor signing the deed of gift and donation from the town of Timerville to the Congo of Virginia as based on the plot.
You talk too fast. I make a motion to sign the deed of gift and donation.
Between the town and.
Between the town of Timerville and the state of Virginia, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Go around the room?
Yes.
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 Okay. Thank you. Council, do you have any other business at this time? Anything else anyone to bring up? Okay. Then we have to figure out, we're going to open.
Yeah, do public comment.
We're going to do public comment, then we can have a closed, closed session again, but. Okay, it's public comment now, if anyone want to make, come up, introduce yourself, where you live, who you are, and now it's time to ask your question, make a comment. So anybody come up right now, just come up front if you'd like.
I don't know if this is the right time or not.
No, it's right.
Ken McKenzie, I lived there a little, I'm like, and I property to real Mason Motors, real Mason Motors. And before I informed this year, I, I heard you say something about, the Mason's property, I'm going to be calling about here, okay, the tractor drillers here and that, and then the business that is not supposed to be there, I bet that's still there.
No, I'm sorry.
The, the business on the, any old Mason Motors probably is not supposed to be there.
That's, yeah. Yeah, we, we sometimes refer to it as the old old Mason Motors and the new old.
That's why I asked.
We're all talking to all that's about the new old.
That's why I asked. Anyway, of course, the Mason's property on here, you know, y'all guys are stuff like, tree was on the path, I'm always in relief and will continue to be in relief. But I was insulted when I got the first letter, offering one dollar for this deal. You know, y'all can property, just any of these are money, is worth more than a dollar, and I don't make no money. I never said I want to make any money. I never said I want to set price. I said I would like to have appraised what the value is before and after the work is done. Because the word that you have here is going to change the price of the property. And so I want to know what it is going to be, and I want to be, I bought it as an investment property, and I'm going to be compensated before I lose, because without a doubt I'm going to lose. I don't pay it down, I just want to be, be prepared for all these. So, want to understand, Quinn here says that I didn't understand what I read. And so I'd like for Mr. R, if you read this two pages to me and explain to me what it says.
I'm not going to sit here, we can sit down after the meeting.
Maybe a couple of words.
Yeah.
I'd like for, that you heard, I'd like for a big public comment, because I don't think I really understand it. Maybe I do, maybe you don't. But I'd like for you to read to me, tell me what it says. And if you don't do it, it's perfectly okay.
Well, we'll do it, we'll do it after, after the meeting. Public comment, if you ask a question, and we don't get into debate, basically.
I just asked you to read some to me, so I'll ask.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll sit down right after this, and we'll go through it and make sure I understand what you're talking about, and, and we can begin. It's, it's always easier to talk face to face, anyway.
Would love to get a result.
Yeah.
All right, and I'll be here afterwards. Unless they would call, if they would call, I'm not here.
That's fine.
Entertaining, thank you.
That's fine, you're good.
Yep.
Any other public comment? Okay, now I got to figure out how we're going to do closed session.
You can do, you can do one of two things, okay? You could either go into closed session, come out of closed session, and then in the meeting, and ask them to wait outside, depending on how long closed session is going to take. Or you could recess the meeting, and we could have a discussion with them, then reconvene, then go to closed session.
I'd rather use that, do it.
Okay, yeah.
So I recess the meeting?
Yeah, yeah, recess the meeting.
Recess the meeting, we'll, we'll.
We're going to take a brief, brief recess, we'll talk to Mr. McKenzie, and then we'll reconvene in the next five or ten minutes.
Okay.
And continue with the meeting there.
We're going to, we're going to go to closed. We're going to, we're going to go to closed.
You're back in session for attorney.
Okay, can I update? I can update them up for a special one, right?
Oh, I mean, you're writing a letter for him.
Well, I mean, you...
Sure.
Right?
Yeah.
I mean, that's my concern. So, the reality is, we have... It's no secret that we need to acquire an easement.
Right.
In order to finish the Squamine Water project. One of the landowners who spoke, we had not had any contact with until, really, tonight. And so, we, uh, we had attempted to speak to them and had sent emails and letters. Uh, but we really needed the time to negotiate. And so, that's why we took a recess, was to negotiate with the other party to try and avoid litigation. So, it's not closed session. It was just a negotiating session. So, that's why it was the mayor, the attorney, and the manager speaking to the landowner.
But we came to an agreement.
But we came to an agreement, which is not finalized yet, so we can't really share it publicly yet.
Yeah. But it was all within... The council gave me, uh, or gave Quentin authority to negotiate at a certain amount, and it's all within that.
Yes. Everything we talked about last session in closed session, we stayed within those parameters.
So, we're... We should be... We're gonna write up the letter, or Quentin's gonna write it, we barely spoke. We're gonna write up the letter, and then Quentin's gonna get with them and hopefully get it, because it sound like we're over toed.
Get your water.
So, now what do we...
Help me get your water.
What's that?
When you asked me to know where we were going.
What's that?
I asked if there were any details.
I didn't think we'd come to an agreement. So, we did come to an agreement, for right now. It may not be an agreement tomorrow. For... For... We have verbal agreement, yeah. That's it. You know, they were very, very nice. They worked with us. Um, I'm glad they came and talked to us, and, um, they just had... They need clarification. We need some clarification, and I think we've, uh, come to an agreement that's good for everybody. Okay, now what do we gotta do?
Close session.
We could go home thirty minutes.
Okay.
Fifteen minutes.
I guess we're going to close session, discuss, uh, personnel matters, right? Is that right?
Yes.
I, I...
Who's yours? You?
I think you said personnel matter, and, um, this one. The legal consultation.
Close two.
So, one set, yes.
Okay. You're going water.
Wait.
You're going help me.
Yeah, yeah. You sure? Yes, yes.
I'll wear this week.
Yeah, I haven't played in three years.
Okay.
I need to go into closed session, pursuant to Code of Virginia Section 2.2-3711A1 for the discussion of personnel matters, and 2.2-3711, Page 7, for consultation with legal counsel on actual or probable litigation.
Okay. Do I have a second? We have a second. Yeah, second.
Second.
We have to agree to go to playstation.
Second.
Okay.
Yes.
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 Okay.